I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. Would you please join me in the ...
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all.
We now move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to start off with a brief moment of silence after I share with you Joan Cassidy of Auburn, passed away at home on Sunday evening, February 1st. She was 89 years old. Joan was a homemaker and mother of four sons, but she was involved in many Auburn civic activities, including the Auburn Town Meeting, the Board of Library Trustees, and the School Building Committee. She belonged to the League of Woman Voters, the YWCA, and was a reporter for the Auburn News. She served as an Auburn Selectman from 1982 to 1994. Joan is survived by her brother Richard and son Neil of Berkeley, California; David of Lexington, Kentucky; Nevin of Hancock, New Hampshire; and Peter of London, England; eight grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. Her brother Robert died in 2014. Joan was a great lady, so if we can join in a brief moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very nice. Any comments?
I just remember seeing Joan walking. She, when she was a selectwoman, she'd walk from her home near St. Jones and saw the way up to Town Hall and back and thought nothing of it. But one time she rode a bicycle. You'd see her all over town. She was a great -- she really was a great lady.
Very nice.
I would echo that, that she was a great lady. She did a lot for this town, and she was very supportive of the town as a whole. And, I mean, she was a woman of knowledge, and you could ask her any questions and she would either -- if she didn't know it, she'd get back. You'd say, "Wayne, I'll get you the answer." And she was just tremendous. I couldn't say any more than that. Just a great person.
Well, I didn't know her, but that was an honor to hear those kind words. I'm sure her family would be happy about that. Thank you. And I don't think we have a student representative's report. Oh, we're still on special recognition, I'm sorry.
We do. We actually -- lots of great news to share this evening. So, as indicated in your packet, there were four Auburn High School students who were recently recognized for their tremendous artwork. One of them is going to be -- all of their works are going to be on display at different exhibits that are taking place. So, the first one, it'll be the Emergent Young Artists 2015 Invitational Exhibition that'll be at UMass Dartmouth, and that is Amy Stevenson, Gabby Trulisi, Megan Johnson, and Anisa Shazai. As well as that, Amy Stevenson has also been accepted to exhibit her work in the Print Making by Secondary Students of Massachusetts, and that will actually be displayed at the Massachusetts Art Education Association's New England Conference. I learned earlier today there were some additional students who have been selected. I think it speaks very highly, not only of these young women, they all happen to be their teacher, but also our program, so I'm very proud of the work that they have done and continue to do. We also have several teachers who were awarded grants to the Auburn Cultural Council and want to thank them. The Marble Collection, and we've had students' artwork represented and published in there. It's a $200 grant for Auburn High School, and it's an opportunity to have our students' work published. We also had Tammy Bailey, a 7th grade social studies teacher at Auburn Middle School, received a grant titled "Grecian Culture" for $577. So, I thank them for writing those grants, giving opportunities to our students, and also want to share with you that, again, this past Saturday, the Auburn team won the We the People competition. So, this is a second year in a row. As I was there on Saturday, there were between 6 and 12 students who had participated last year, and as you know, went down to Washington. They were there to cheer them on. There was a huge contingent. As judges would come in, they were taken aback, as they were last year, by the number of people in attendance to support the Auburn kids. So, it was great, and plans are underway to see about sending them to the national competition again. So, very good news. Very good news.
That's excellent. Any comments?
Congratulations.
That's great.
I'm a mother, reasonably proud to be in Auburn for the day.
Yes.
Absolutely. I would just say that, and I've said it in the past, it's good to see that our arts are right up there with our sports as far as importance and as far as the amount of students that are taking part in that, and as well as, what, Mr. Canard, is it? Bonaccio? Is that a those?
Mr. Canard and Mr. Bonaccio, yes. Yes.
Okay. And I'd like to congratulate them on that. That's fantastic.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And no student representatives report, so I would seek approval of minutes from the January 22nd meeting. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Now, move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And with your permission, I would -- Mr. Barber is actually out sick today. Mrs. King is in attendance, so with your approval, if we could move up the update regarding the Auburn school lunches, if that's possible?
Sounds good. You don't want to stay with us all night? That's fine.
She didn't even bring a lunch.
Yeah.
Not even a grab-and-go. That's fine. Sounds good to me.
So, on behalf of Mr. Barber and Mrs. King, we have met on a number of occasions, and as mentioned to you previously, we watch the budget of food services very closely. That program is intended to be a self-supporting program, so revenue is in should suffice in paying out the salary costs, as well as any repairs, as food costs and all of that upkeep. What we've found over the past few years, there was a time when we had a reserve of money and were able to absorb if there were any deficits. It's actually been two years since we've increased school lunch prices. So, what we're looking to do is to address this issue on a number of fronts. First, Mrs. King has been meeting with her team and will be doing some reduction in hours to staff. They've done a study regarding the meals per lunch hour and how do you need to serve in order to have it be successful. They've done an in-depth analysis regarding the cost of food. As we all know, at our own homes, the cost of food continues to go up, and we also offer more fresh foods in our things, and those often come at a higher cost as well. What we are proposing here is, in the third part of that, is we're really going on a campaign to try and increase participation. Even though this year we have seen a 48% increase in our school breakfast program and a 4% increase in our school lunch program, it's not enough to compensate for the additional costs that we have. So, we're seeking your approval. We'd like this to go into effect March 1st, for the elementary lunch prices to go from $2.50 to $2.75, and then for middle and high school to go from $2.75 to $3. Now, assuming this increase is granted, we would not seek an increase next school year, so it would keep the cost of food the same. We did provide for you, Mr. Barber and Mrs. King, provided for you on the reverse side some comparative data. Even with these increased prices, as you can see, we're very much in keeping, and even low, in fact, lower than many area districts. I know a concern that we always have is to be sure that we're not disadvantaging any child, and I can assure you that we continue to offer free and reduced lunch opportunities. Parents can sign up at any time in the year. If they meet the criteria that's set by the federal government, they're granted, and that's given to them right away. So, it is my recommendation that you approve this increase effective March 1st, and we would advertise it to families. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The free and reduced lunch, does that come from the money we're collecting from the students, or does that come from the government?
Free and reduced lunch money comes -- that's actually a reimbursement from the government that we receive, and one of the areas that Mr. Barber and Mrs. King have noticed is that some of our students who qualify for free and reduced lunch are not actually participating in the free lunch program, in the lunch program. So, we're really going on an effort to try and engage those students. Obviously, if they qualify for it, it's a benefit to which they're entitled, so we really want to get them, and we get a good reimbursement from the federal government, which would help us. So, that would also help us as well. So, you know, Mrs. King's got some great ideas. She's working with her team, who are also coming up with some good ideas. I think that if we can get more students, even though our numbers are increasing, if we can get more of them to try it and participate, obviously, we'll need more hours. Everything will balance out, so.
Do you think the increase will cause a problem and decrease?
You know, I don't -- we don't believe so. When we looked at the comparative data, it certainly suggests that Auburn is very much in line or even lower than some other communities. We could certainly monitor that, you know, for you. I think that it -- the lunch prices that we offer from what students get is really a very good value. There's a lot of fresh fruits and vegetables on there, so we don't anticipate that being the case. It's a modest increase, unless we said there hasn't been one for a couple of years.
Okay.
If I could have one more question. The students that are eligible for free lunch, is there anyone monitoring that they're eating, that they are bringing a lunch from home and they are eating?
That absolutely happens. So, in all of our schools, there is staff there that oversee and monitor the lunchroom, whether it's...
So, they certainly wouldn't want anyone not to eat.
Right. Oh, yeah. No, and we wouldn't allow that if there was anybody who didn't have a lunch. There's lunch options for them to get, absolutely. Absolutely.
Would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to increase the lunch rates effective March 1st at the elementary schools from $2.50 to $2.75, and at the middle and high school from $2.75 to $3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I would just say that I'm on board with this. Obviously, the research was done. You run the numbers, and as Dr. Brunel said, we're not going to leave any child out there hungry. And if this did cause some financial burden on a family or two, then by all means, come back to us, and we'll see if we can make some adjustments. Right? Is that accurate?
It is. Yep.
That being the case, and I would absolutely support this. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, you have to wait until the end.
Have a nice night.
Thank you. Drive safe.
All right. Back to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item, I wanted to make you aware of a grant that has been written. Mr. Wright and Mrs. Loach from Auburn Middle School have written a competitive grant. They've applied for it, "Ignite the Power of STEM." If awarded, these funds would help to enhance Mr. Wright's environmental engineering class, as well as Mrs. Loach's science class. So, the grant is in the amount of $5,000. As we always do, I thank them for their initiative in doing this, and we'll keep you apprised if they are successful.
Okay. We wish them luck.
Yeah. Two other announcements for you, both of which involve Mr. Handfield. The first one is the high school principal. He was nominated for the School Library Association Administrative Advocate Award. The high school library media specialist, Mrs. Dutton, had nominated him for this, and as it says here, that this honor, this award honors those administrators who have made significant contributions to the promotion of effective school library programs and services. So, we applaud Mr. Handfield for his initiative in this, and he will be recognized at a dinner on Sunday, March 1st. So, I thank him for that, and he has also applied and been accepted to serve as a -- there's a new preparation program for individuals going in to become an administrator in education, and he is going to serve as one of the evaluators on the team. He'll be scoring, as it says here, "Vision for High Achievement," and working with teachers in classrooms directly. Standards 1 and 3. So, he's going to get some training on that to eliminate any bias, and I think it's a -- anytime any one of us from Auburn is recognized in any way, I think just shines a nice light on our district.
That's wonderful.
Any comments? Questions?
It just says, speaks to the high quality of people that we have working in this district.
I would agree with that. How much time is Mr. Handfield going to be spending on that?
It's actually a couple of days that he's going to be doing some training around this and then actually going through and reading, so I don't know that he knows the full extent of it, but I know that there were two days of training.
So, as far as the evaluations go, it's not school visits that he would be going on?
No, they're not.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item, I wanted to make you aware. Annually, Desi reports out the dropout rate, as well as the graduation rates, which, as you may have seen them in the paper, they don't actually, if you -- it would seem that if you take the graduation rate and the dropout rate and add them together, which should equal 100, it does not, because they actually give students, some students come back for their fifth year. But in 2014, the dropout rate was 1.2%. That's an extremely low percentage, but as I said in here, our goal is to have zero of our students drop out. We try to support them, whether it's getting the GED, we have alternative programming at the high school, we have some online courses, so we really try to tailor it in full recognition of the need for a high school diploma, so we'll continue to work on getting that down even further.
Dr. Brunel, do they start by taking the freshman class, and then they look at that class, if they graduate or not?
So, that's some of the ways that they do it. So, they look at the four-year cohort, looking right from freshmen. They have the five-year cohort, if a student comes back, and we are obligated, and we've done this anyway, by law now, to do outreach efforts. So, even if we had a student who, say, dropped out last year, we, Mr. Handfield, sends a letter to them this year, invites them to return, and the guidance would offer to set up a meeting to try and be as creative as possible with scheduling, so. But that is one of the cohorts that they, that create.
And what's the age that they're allowed to drop out at? Is it 16?
It is. It's 16, yes. Yes. Yep.
Any other comments? I just have a couple of questions regarding the return to school and the GED process of the scheduling. Couldn't be made creative enough to keep them in a regular academic program. Do we actually offer GED training and testing at the school? How does that work? Or practice testing?
We don't offer the GED testing right at school, but what we have done, and we really do it based on individual cases for students. Quinn Singeman does offer a course, and we have coordinated that and actually paid for it, to have students who, you know, after other alternatives that we've tried in the school have not worked, then we've paid to support them to go through, to get their GED, and some students have done that.
Okay. Because I'm sure there's some financial hardships involved in some of these cases, and there's just no way that they can stay in school.
Right. So, that's absolutely the tact that we have taken, is that we believe it that important that we have actually paid for them to do that.
That's excellent.
Yep.
Thank you.
In here, when this was created, I did not know that the We the People would win, but I just wanted you to know, I did go down. It was great, and as you said, Mrs. Scobie, the teachers are to be commended, as well as all the students and their families. There was tremendous -- I was able to stay for a big chunk in the middle of the day, needed to leave before the awards, but I was getting multiple texts from multiple people and put it out on Twitter, you'll be happy to know, and assessing my goals, and it was retweeted many times, so it was very good.
Any comments? I would just, I'm sorry to have...
Congratulations, that you get to attend the Olympics.
Yeah.
I posted on a weekend, so thank you for that.
I think when I responded to the original message, whether it was on Facebook or through a text, I think, I think what I said, and I will reiterate, is I'm impressed with how these students and teachers want to spend the time on their weekends, on their time off from school, what they're willing to do to become successful. That's just very impressive to me, because not all students at that age are doing things like that on the weekends, and I'm very impressed and honored to be chair of a school committee where we have students that take part in those activities. That's just excellent.
Yeah.
And thanks again to the instructors, and I'm not going to try to hack up their names again. Mr. Canard and Bonaccio.
Yes, exactly. Two that, if I just may add to that, one of the challenges that we're having right now, I had sent you both of our student representatives, Taylor and John, were members of the, are members of the We the People team. And as I was talking to the students that day, Taylor and a young man, Evan, are the leads in Footloose, the play. So, many of the students who were there that day, whether they are athletes or in the rocket band or academic in any way, they spread themselves across a wide variety of things, but the challenge right now is getting it all scheduled. You know, there's only so much time, and when the We the People event will be, and when the play will be, and when they're heading to Disney, as they reported last week, for the band and stuff. So, that's all very much in discussions right now, so, yeah.
Wow.
All good stuff, for good reasons.
Yeah. I guess that's a, that's a good thing to worry about.
Mm-hmm.
We now move on to unfinished business.
Wanted to make you aware, I think I had shared with you, with the online park testing coming this spring, we are holding, the principals are holding parent information sessions. The one that was planned for Monday was obviously postponed due to the snow, which turned out to be quite a bit more than I think any of us had initially anticipated, but I commend the principals and their teams for offering these to make sure that they maintain that connection with the parents. It really is a team effort.
For the chair, some questions about that.
Sure.
Will there be makeup dates, only because there's only one for the elementary?
They will. They're actually coming up. I don't know that they've advertised or selected it yet, but they will be advertising, yeah, the new date for that, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Wanted to make you aware, we did post the public hearing. We have gotten in a couple of additional name suggestions for Tenswanton Road, the naming of that. In fact, I got another one earlier today. So, Mrs. Zottner is tracking those. We've done press releases to Auburn Mass Daily, the Auburn News, local cable. It went out of the email notification, and it's definitely being seen. In fact, it was this weekend, someone had read it in the Auburn News, it was commenting, and another had read it in the email notification, so I anticipate there'll be a number of names for your consideration on the 19th.
Good.
Any comments?
No, the more the better.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's good to have all the residents and the students and everybody involved in coming up with ideas for the naming.
I would say the same thing. We appreciate the work that's been done by the committee, and we appreciate the names that have come in so far, but keep them coming. The more the merrier. The more that we have to pick from, the better chance we're going to come up with great names, so keep the names coming.
We, Annually, you asked that this get put on the agenda as an additional reminder to families. Hard copies have or are going home regarding the bus applications that are due April 1st, so that we can have good data in terms of determining bus routes and the number of buses that we'll have, so that's just a reminder regarding that. The School Reuse Disposition Advisory Group was also expected to meet on February 2nd and to take a tour of Mary D., was it, intended?
Yes, correct.
That has been postponed, till, is it, next week?
We haven't set a new date for that, but we are planning on touring Julia Bancroft on the 17th, and just to have Mr. Faghi go through and point out any of the pain points in the building, what's the [inaudible] structure, so.
All right. Keep us posted.
Absolutely.
The, you know that I was intending to go to the Board of Selectments meeting on the 26th. That was canceled due to snow. It is planned for Monday. I will tell you, they have tentatively scheduled for Tuesday in case there is snow on Monday. They have posted for that, just in case, so I will be going that evening, and I believe Mr. Faghi will join me to share with them the good news about the accelerated repair. He is very much the lead on that program, and also to address with them the circuit breaker issue, so I will be going Monday or Tuesday night, whenever it is out.
What was the date on that again?
Monday, February 9th.
Okay. We now move on to new business.
Just wanted to make you aware that, it actually, it turns out, there were a number of districts, in fact, it may have been every district in Massachusetts, was outreach by a reporter from Channel 22, WWLP, seeking a copy of the contract, so we've complied with that under public records, and just wanted you to be aware that that, they did receive it, well in advance of the 10-day requirement.
Okay. What kind of events?
As noted in here, and a couple of them will need to be rescheduled. There's the park presentation. Do want to remind you, next week, actually, a week from tonight, will be the 8th grade orientation to high school. They have a slide presentation that they put together. Today was kindergarten registration, always a very exciting day for young children and families. It's really more the parent program. They go in and actually get their paperwork, and coming up next month will be the kindergarten screening program, so always exciting to welcome new school, students to school. In the sweetheart social, we have one of them coming up tomorrow night, when some of our young girls in elementary school will be inviting a special guest to a dance tomorrow night, and then there's the Boys Luau, which will be District 1 and 2 put together. I've had the opportunity to go to them in the past and stop in, and they're both very fun events. The boys are extremely active in running around and excited, and there's lots of good dancing going on with girls and their dads and special guests, so it's real nice. Very, very nice.
I was able to attend the luau one year, as my wife wasn't feeling well. Yeah, that was very interesting. It was me and a bunch of screaming boys and a lot of moms.
Exactly.
Very nice evening. I can't say enough about it.
Yeah.
Who does all the work for planning the meal? Is it the teachers, the parents, or?
The PTO.
The PTO does it? Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah. Once again, the PTO's doing a fantastic job. It's quite a setup that they have with the DJ and all the snacks, and, as we said, a lot of running around, maybe not as much dancing as running around, but it's...
Sometimes they think they're dancing.
It is a great event, and again, we thank the PTO.
They make it look good.
Yeah. I agree. I couldn't agree more.
We now move on to business and financial.
Thank you. So, we have provided for you a year-to-date budget report. Mr. Barber and I meet on these generally every other week to review through them in anticipation of the meetings. There are no areas of concern, as noted, and we do continue to look for any areas where we may, and you'll see some transfers coming, for any funds that may be available. We try to reappropriate them, obviously, so that they directly benefit students. The pro-pay update for the month of January, Mr. Barber stays on this, works very closely with Mr. Kazanovich, as well as Skanska and LPA representatives, in making these, bringing these forward to the School Building Committee, who reviews and approves, and then he processes the payment to get the money, the reimbursement, back to the town as quickly as possible, so that continues to go well. And then in terms of transfers, as we do each month, we take a look to see if there are any shifts that are required. There are two sets of them here, some that do not require your approval and others that do. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but it is my recommendation that you approve them.
I would entertain a motion to approve the transfers.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers in the 2,000 and 4,000 series. That's presented by Dr. Brunel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And we now move on to policies.
Great. So, in your packet, you have two policies on second reading that were the domestic violence leave policy, as well as the observations of special education programs. Those were both brought to you at last month's meeting for first reading, and it is my recommendation that you approve those, which you can choose to do together or separately.
Does anyone have an issue with us taking them together?
No.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve both policies.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to also add the third policy, the field trips. I just had two policies, just on things, three policies.
I think we ought to discuss the...
Field trip one?
Field trip, yeah.
Yeah, why don't we take the two?
Take those two and then...
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
So, the, the next policy regarding field trips, IJOA and IJOA-1. This was in response to a discussion held at the last meeting with regard to whether consideration could be given if there was a successful field trip, that was a day-long field trip, was not overnight, but could be out of state. Was there a way that if it had been successful, had previously been approved by the school committee, that the individuals would not necessarily need to come on an annual basis? I think the Pequot Museum trip, third grade takes, was one that was, was mentioned as an example. So, what I did here is, and I did share, after I made these track changes based on your comments, is I also shared these with the principals to be sure, I explained to them what it is that you had been seeking, and they did review through these. I hope that it met the criteria, but if not, I will certainly open to answering any questions you might have, or if there are any changes that you want to see. Otherwise, I just share it with you as, as requested.
Is there any discussion, any questions on this, on this policy? As you, as you recall, I, the reason that I brought it up was, I just felt that, you know, in some cases, and not all cases, that, that the administrators or the teachers who are hosting these trips were probably spending some unneeded, unnecessary time here at, at the school committee meetings, when they could be home with their families, if not following up on some of their, their day's activities. With all of the assessments that they have to do now and the new evaluation process, I just think that focusing too much time on, on things like this, field trips, not to say that they're not, that they're not important, is, is just overbearing sometimes. And I think if we can take some of that, that pressure or those time constraints off of them, seeing as it is going to go through the principal, and then it is going to go through the superintendent, and it's also going to go through us for, actually, a third, third checkpoint. So, really, it's, we're taking a good look at this. So, to have them here, I think in a lot of cases, is, is probably just a bit much.
I think so, too. I know from my point of view, as a teacher, we used to hear that someone had to come, and we're like, why? They've done that same trip every year. It just seemed burdensome for no reason.
And we're also talking about, we're also talking about some of these out-of-state trips, which are done a year in advance. So, if we did have, have an issue on that particular night, and we didn't have a spokesperson, administrator, or, or another chaperone who was hosting the event, we could always ask them back for the following meeting, two weeks later.
Yes.
And I guess we could have, have it cleared up, then we could table it. And so, I really can't see any harm in, in the new policy or the way it's written.
No, I think it's an excellent...
So, move, excuse me, sorry.
No, that's all.
So, basically, you, what you're saying is, they don't need to come here, and then we'll approve it, or you're giving, we're giving the authority to the superintendent and the principals to have...
No, I'm saying...
The authority to do it instead of us.
No, we would, we would still sign off on it, absolutely. It would go through the principal, and through Mary Ellen, and if it still seems like a good idea, then it will come to us, and we'll take a look at it. And if we have an issue with it at that point in time...
Then we'll call them in.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I just thought of the, I just thought of the follow-up meeting, Dr. Burnell.
Right. I just don't want it to...
So, would we have to, in that case, change the policy that says one year in advance if we were going to be pushing it back to the next meeting?
Yeah. So, through the chair, what I had actually written here, so, and I will make a modification to this, and there's ample time. What I hear that you would like to see happen is that, so, out-of-state field trips would still require school committee approval, but that, and we typically have them in an April meeting for the entire following school year, if possible. So, those would still come before you. They would still be approved by the principal and by myself, but we would not need someone here explaining it.
That's correct.
Because what I had written here, so I need to update this, is that, that it would not require your approval. That was my misunderstanding. So, I will get this changed for the next meeting, but I will tell you that the principals were very much in favor of that, the teachers as well, especially for a trip, as noted in here. If the trip has, has been held successfully, there have not been any incidents, and it's, it's one that's been approved by the committee, but I'll, I'll do some rewording on that.
Yeah. I don't think that's going to be a burden of any sort, just bringing the, the actual permission slip to us. It's not going to take any extra time.
Right. And if we have a problem, you're going to be involved with it, then we can ask you.
Right.
I agree with them not having to be here, but I still think we should look at, especially out-of-state field trips.
Okay.
So, how would that be worded? Let's say that we had a question.
I think she's doing it right now.
Yeah. No, I'm not sure. We might be on the same page, but that extra two weeks, or what if, let's say that it wasn't two weeks, because the next meeting got canceled for whatever reason, and it was three weeks. Does that have to be, no?
I, I don't think it's going to be an issue through the chair, is that what we typically do, so say in April of 15, in two more months, we typically have brought before you all of the field trips. The Pequot one is a, is a great example. It's been happening year after year for a decade.
Since they opened it.
Right. So, that would still come before you. That would be part of the packet in April or May, and if you had any questions about it, it would still be ample time at the next meeting, because the trip is really not even until, typically, they take it in the fall of third grade, so there'd be months and months available.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent.
One last question.
I don't know like that, but if the superintendent's going to be involved with it, if we need to ask any questions, we can just ask her while she's here.
As usual, yeah.
And then we can make the decisions, and instead of dragging everybody in.
Right. Right.
I agree. Now...
So, we'll put it on the next agenda, then.
Okay.
I'll update it. Okay.
Sounds good. And we do not need to go into executive session?
Correct.
So, I would...
I would.
...intertain a motion to adjourn.
I need that motion to adjourn. I don't know, I kept looking at her like, I didn't know what was going on here for a minute.
She seemed like she wanted to say something. Do I have a second?
You do.
Any discussion, anything that you wanted to say before we close up?
Good night.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
[music]